Welcome back to our Nassau County Chamber Candidate Forum for Board of County Commission District 5. Once again, for those of you guys have watched some of these other ones, my name is Sean McGill, a board member, a member of our Government Affairs Committee, and it's my pleasure to be moderating our candidate forums this year. Due to the current situation with COVID, we've had several changes in our forums throughout the years so far. Normally, we'd have a room full of smiling faces that would be here to greet our candidates. But moving forward, we figured the best way to get the information out from our candidates to the public is through this Zoom format. So we hope to be back to full video production for some of our upcoming forums, but we're glad that everybody's here to join us now. So for the, again, those of you that have watched, a reminder of our format. Each of our candidates will have up to five minutes to introduce themselves to us, and then we'll start a round robin group of questions. Each candidate will start in the hot seat first. They have not seen or heard these questions prior, and they'll have a minute and a half to answer each of those questions. So I'd like to welcome our current candidates for Board of County Commission Group 5. When you guys hear your name, go ahead and raise your hand to introduce yourself, and then we'll start, Mr. Clint Farmer.
How you doing?
Mr. Charlie Gressman.
Hello, everyone.
And Mr. Anthony Stamps. So we'll go ahead and get started with our candidate introductions with Mr. Clint Farmer.
All right, well, Sean, I'd like, first off, start to thank each of you guys there at the chamber for hosting the event. Like to thank Regina Alex, there's a lot of hard work, dedication goes into this event. I know it's difficult amidst the COVID-19, but I think through technology, we've bridged, we're bridging the gap. I'd like to begin by saying that my name's Clint Farmer. I'm a lifelong native of Nassau County and a resident of Callahan. I'm an honors graduate of West Nassau High School and Florida Gold Seal Academic Scholarship winner. I've got 27 years of private sector business experience as a wastewater mechanic and a septic tank contractor. I own K.A. Farmer Septic Tank Service located in my hometown, the heart of the district, that I wish to serve you as your commissioner here in District 5. Also own a trailer business, Farmer's Trailers, a dealership for down-to-earth trailers out of Baxley, Georgia, and Stryker trailers out of Piedmont, Alabama. Through my years of service to Nassau County, I've been employed in retail at Winn-Dixie Store #151, owned and operated a portable toilet rental business for 20 years, and was blessed to work in manufacturing at Anheuser-Busch Brewery for two years as a weekend relief filler operator. Through this diverse resume, I've trained dozens of employees, implemented safety programs, operated and managed large budgets, and developed business networks that provide our neighborhoods with honest, reliable customer service at affordable prices throughout all construction trades. Outside of business, I served the city of Jacksonville as a reserve police officer from 2006 to 2017, honorably assisting patrol, canine, and narcotics divisions during my tenure, and received many awards through that service to the community. I'm a Republican conservative, self-motivated, accessible, accountable, transparent, public servant who takes great pride in serving my community. I pledged in my campaign from 2016 and also in this year's campaign that I will not accept special interest or big developers donations simply because my campaign is not about me, it is about we. My integrity isn't for sale, tells the story of who I am as a business leader and a decision-maker. I believe that growth is inevitable and can be beneficial. However, we must intrinsically channel our money in government to ensure that we grow through infrastructure, roads, bridge, public safety, parks and recreation, et cetera, alongside these new developments, so we ensure that there isn't a burden placed on the backs of existing taxpayers. Private property rights are protected, and we guarantee ourselves a safe, secure neighborhood worthy of praise. Some of the many social and civic events I've participated with throughout the years are affiliated with the Morocco Shrine Temple of Jacksonville, Florida, and the A Lee Shrine Temple of Savannah, Georgia, representing the Shriners Hospitals for Children. I'm a past master of Callahan Masonic Lodge #32 and a member of First Baptist Church, Callahan. I'm an active member of the Florida On-Site Wastewater Association, participating with the Political Action Committee by assisting with the literature of several bills and lawmaking associated with my trade. I believe in promoting small business, keeping taxes low, smaller government, protecting private property rights, making sure that growth always pays for itself, and strengthening public safety for the benefit of tomorrow's youth, who wish to raise their family in our hometown and contribute to the clean, healthy living. I believe in conservation, green spaces, protecting and preserving our pristine beaches, along with working together as a community to accomplish these goals. I'm Clint Farmer, I humbly ask for your vote on August 18th.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Gressman, go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Charlie Gressman, and first of all, I want to thank the chamber for having us today, letting us tell a little bit about ourselves and our platforms and our campaign. And if you want to know about Charlie Gressman in a nutshell, I'm a Christian man, I'm a family man, and I'm not scared of hard work. I'm an active member of Callahan First Baptist Church in Callahan, where I served with, in the youth department, and also always glad to get involved in food drives and mission trips and disaster relief projects that we do through the church. I was raised on a dairy farm with, and my wife and I, Linda, ran it for 27 years after we were married. And at that time, I went to work for a large corporation in the agribusiness community where I was in charge of the southeast. When I decided to retire at the end of 2019, I began thinking about what I wanted to do, and most of it revolved around riding some horses, tending to my cattle, and probably the last thing was being involved in politics. I'd never had a desire to run for office, but at the same time, I had a desire to get involved and be a part of trying to shape Nassau County and move it forward in a good way. And when I first started running, I asked myself, what kind of qualifications do I have for being a county commissioner? And I thought of myself as a small business owner, running my dairy farm, and, you know, I said, well, that gives me qualifications. And it did, but then, when I went to work for a large corporation, I had to do things that I didn't have to do as a sole proprietorship, such as more collaboration and more work dealing with people. And that gives me ways to learn to collaborate with people, to set goals, to set objectives, strategies of how we had to move our company forward, and also think that that's traits that a county commissioner should have, be able to sit down, discuss, collaborate with people, and set goals and objectives and strategies for our county and how we can move it forward in a positive way. After considering to run and thinking that I had some credentials that would qualify me, my next question was, what do I want to see changed in Nassau County? Or what do I want to be able to help address? Of course, the number one in our county, all over the county, is growth, the hot topic we're dealing with, and we're going to have growth. We're in a great community, a great county, and people are looking to move here and develop here. And I think we just, we're going to have to learn how to manage it. We're going to have to slow it some at times if we have to, to make sure we have the infrastructure in place where we can sustain the growth. We've got to watch, make sure we have the schools and the first responders and the law enforcement in place as we bring in people. Number two on the deal was taxes. I am a lifelong homeowner, property owner, business owner, and I do not want to see us have to raise taxes. This is why I believe that we have to plan to attract the right kinds of business that can pay for themselves in order that we can remain one of the lowest taxed counties in the state of Florida. As a commissioner, I would strive to spend the county's money wisely, just as during my business time and operate my own businesses and having to watch out for my own money, I would strive to watch out for the counties, hold people accountable and departments accountable as we move forward and transparent. I love Nassau County. I don't want to live anywhere else. And I've enjoyed being able to live and play and work here, and I want to be able to see my grandchildren and future generations of this county be able to enjoy the same opportunities that I've had as I've grown up here. I do know, I don't want to sit on the sidelines and throw rocks. I want to be a part of the solutions of moving this county forward, and that's why I seek to be Commissioner for Nassau County. And I would appreciate your vote on August 18th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps.
Good morning. Hello, I'm Anthony Stamps, running for County Commissioner, District 5. I would like to take a moment to thank the chamber for the opportunity to speak to everyone this morning. I want to use this time to talk a little bit about me and my family, why I decided to enter this race, and why I'm the most qualified for the office. I have deep roots here. I'm a Nassau County native. I was born and raised here. I'm a local small business owner. My wife, Michelle, is a graduate of University of South Florida and a veteran schoolteacher for 22 years. We raise our family here. This is our home. I really, we really are the modern-day Brady Bunch. We have three, we have six children, three girls, three boys. In 2017, our oldest graduated from University of North Florida, and now it's completely grown and flawed. We have to enjoy college experience, as I'm talking to you now, and my wallet confirms that. We also have two boys attending West Nassau High School in the 11th and 12th grades this year. Our youngest is Ella. She is 13 and eighth grader at Callahan Middle School. As you can see, I have strong vested interests in the future of Nassau County. I would like to see the community where my children can work and raise their children. I want them to live here, not just survive. I entered this race because I want to give a good, true, strong voice to the citizens of Nassau County. As my friends and neighbors have lost their confidence in the county government to do the right thing, I want to restore that confidence. The good old boy political establishment has plagued Nassau County for years. It has only resulted in very poor, short-sighted planning to benefit only the elite few. Most recently, this poor planning and corruption has landed us in the middle of several lawsuits costing taxpayers over $400,000 in climate. We never should have ended up in this position to begin with. We need commissioners that can manage their money. We can all work to, work with all community stakeholders to make solution-based focused decisions with foresight and integrity, so all residents of Nassau County can benefit. With the right people in the right places, we will move forward. I'm the most qualified candidate for District 5 Commissioner's seat. Reason one, I know how to use a calculator, plain and simple. This is a position of economics. I own two successful small businesses in Nassau County. I understand the importance of hard work and dedication. Both of my businesses were born out of necessity, and I personally built them from the ground up. I am self-made. After being laid off in 2009 with a $20 bill, a lot of grit, using only daily credit, opened my auto repair business as an owner-operated facility. My business has grown consistently in vendor relationship, customer base, gross sales, and continues to increase its net profit annually. In response to increasing demand for construction services and labor management, 2018, I launched an exterior siding and renovation company with annual gross sales of $500,000 and over a 20% profit. To focus in on small, on business goals and developing strong community relationships, I continue to build my client base. I want to use my experience and proven record in business and economic success to support businesses and workers. In closing, folks, now more than ever, we need not only business experience, but my energy, proven work ethic, dedication, integrity, and grit. I will bring all of that to the Board of County Commissioners. I also bring a fresh perspective. I'm the only candidate running in my race with no ties to any current or past commissioners. This county needs true transparency to see behind closed doors. I bring conservative values back. I believe we need to assess our damages and stop the bleeding before we move forward with any capital spending. We must stop wasteful spending, and due to the current economic impact of COVID-19, I believe we need to be stabilized. I support businesses. Businesses need guidance and support, and I have the experience and knowledge to help local businesses flourish. Nassau County is at its best when we move together. So please vote for me, Anthony Stamps, on August 18th for County Commissioner, District 5. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with our questions. Remember, each of you will be on the hot seat first for a different question, but you'll all have the opportunity to answer each of them and a minute and a half to respond. So our first question, we'll start with Mr. Farmer. What, in your opinion, is the single most important characteristic a person must have to be successful as a county commissioner?
Accessibility, transparency, honesty, and integrity. I think all four of those are the most important aspects to being a county commissioner. People want someone that they can call on at a moment's notice, and you will be there. You can come out and give those folks an honest assessment of what their problem is.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Gressman.
I would like to, Ammon?
You're on.
Okay, I would like to see honesty, integrity, and transparency back in our, for people to think about that as our commissioners. That's been on my, that's been on my flyers and my handout from the very get-go is honesty, transparency, and integrity. And I live by that. My life reflects that. And that's, that's what I want to see is, that's what I want to see in our commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps.
Yes.
What, what, in your opinion, is the single most important characteristic a person must have to be successful as a county commissioner?
First is honesty. I believe someone needs to be very honest, very transparent, and carry a lot of integrity. But also, I believe grit. It takes a lot of strength to do this job. You've got to be bulletproof. You've got to be able to handle all walks of life. This county's large. I mean, there's over 100,000 people living in it with different mindsets, and you've got to be able to cross the aisle with them people. And which is very important, because this job is to create unity and stabilization. But, you know, of course, honesty is probably the top of my list, you know, and falls back to transparency and, of course, accessibility. Because I don't know how many times, I've knocked on probably 3,500 doors in this county, and the first thing out of their mouth is, is we can't reach the commissioners. We send emails, we call, they don't respond. I think, I think that's, I believe they lost their faith in us, and we're going to have to look into that. So that's about as best as I can answer this one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stamps. Moving on to our second question, starting with Mr. Gressman this time. How do you believe we should balance business growth in the county with residential growth?
Well, needless to say, we've got plenty of residential growth right now. And I think we have to, we need to bring in, do whatever it takes to bring in some business. I think more like light business, medium-type business, not heavy industrial, so to speak. But we're going to have to work together, work with the chamber, work with the Economic Development Board, and to bring in the right kind of business into our county that can be an asset for us to provide jobs, to diversify the tax base, so that we can keep our taxes low on our residential properties as we're enjoying, in most cases now. So we've, we've got to work to bring in the right kind of growth. It's times we'll have to say no to some growth of business, because we want the rights, we want the right type. And, and, and everybody wants to come here, so we need to make sure we accept nothing but the best for our county.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps, how do you, what do you do to believe that we should balance growth, business growth with residential growth in the county?
Well, I believe we need to bring some industrial jobs into this county. If you look around, you know, we've got shopping malls everywhere. You know, it's hard to raise a family on a clerk's job. You know, if you looked at, if you look at part of what they tried to do here on the western side of Nassau County, they tried, they looked into the Crawford Diamond. You know, without deep research, your thought and idea is, what's such a great idea? You're bringing in $20 to $30 to $40 an hour jobs. You're, you're, you're increasing the deep tax base. We're not sucking the resources out of the county. You know, if you keep putting homes into this county, and, and their children are going to schools, and there's low-income jobs, they're sucking the resources out. You know, of course, property taxes will have to rise if you, if you don't replenish the resources. So again, I believe that the deep tax base is very important. You know, on the western side of this county, instead of popping rooftops up out in the middle of the woods, I believe we need to be popping up industrial jobs. So again, I believe the deep tax base is very important. We need to step away from housing developments and go into industrial growth. I think, I think that's where we're going to find our resources at.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, I believe that we should do more for small, family-owned businesses, first and foremost. I think that the government's done a very, very poor job in the past of helping, you know, the mom-and-pops type places out. You know, we need to step in and help those people thrive, because that's the backbone of America, first and foremost. I also believe that, you know, of course, business and industry, you know, they're attracted to a successful neighborhood. You know, they're attracted to successful communities. And the more successful the neighborhood is, the more successful your schools are, the more healthy the industry or the business will be. So it'll help us moving forward to attract those industries that we need to bring here that will provide our communities with high-wage jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. And moving on, our next question, Mr. Stamps. You are up first. And are there things that the county is doing well or could do better to foster responsible economic growth within the county?
I believe, I believe they're not doing superb with it. You know, you have Nassau County Economic Development Board that works in this county to, to promote growth within, with businesses within the county. You know, my, my wife taught in Hilliard, and one of the things that she worked with was Nassau County Economic Development Board at the Bean Center in Newly. I know everyone's familiar with that. And what you have here is, like FCCJ, they do, they do a lot of training in trying to bring industrial, industrial-based positions as far as HVAC and all this. But we have nowhere to plug these people in at. We're training them here on our tax dollars, and we're pushing them over into Duval County and other counties. There's nowhere for them to work at. I believe, I believe that the lean, again, back, back to the last one was, is you've got to have a place to put them if you're going to train them here to go to work. So I believe, working with the economics of the county, we need to work on using the resources and the people in this county moving forward. I believe, I believe that's going to be very beneficial.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Mr. Farmer, how do you think we're doing on the balance for responsible economic growth in the county?
Well, you know, growth is obviously the big elephant in the room. Every one of our forums has, you know, that's the big topic, that's the hot topic. And I think it all revolves around that 30-plus percent tax increase that we've received over the last four years to cover the bases, per se, for that residential sprawl. As far as bringing manufacturing jobs or bringing, promoting small business, you know, again, we've got to continue to be a thriving neighborhood, you know, that's successful and worthy of praise. And, you know, incentives in the past, we've used incentives. We've worked with the chamber, we've worked with the Economic Development Board. I believe in, if we can structure some sort of incentive package to bring something really big here that, you know, brings a lot of jobs that are high-wage jobs, truly high-wage jobs to the community, then that would be something worth looking into. But I think we could do a whole lot better job than what we've done in the past as far as recruiting, you know, high-wage jobs and then promoting small business too to flourish in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Gressman.
Could you repeat the question, Sean?
Absolutely. Are there things that the county is doing well or could do better to foster responsible economic growth in the county?
I think maybe we are doing a few things better. Some of the large developments now, they're bringing business in with them. They're bringing some, you know, food and, and, and different things, and some of the planned, what's on the planning board or the planning right now, you know, future stuff that's in the works. There's, there's more things being built into them in these, in large developments. That's just part of it. We've got to bring good jobs here. We've got to bring good business that can bring these good jobs and help diversify our tax base. I think people are starting to see this more and more. We're all discussing this this morning, the three of us, the, basically the same things of what we need. And we just have to work with Chamber, Economic Development Board, and look around, look at other areas and see how they're doing things that, the way that we would like to see them done. But to bring the right kind of growth, let's don't get in a hurry and just bring something here that we don't want in our county.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gressman. You guys are giving me a complex, if, if you're saying our questions are unoriginal with talking about growth. So, so let me throw a new one at you, and we'll start with Mr. Farmer on this one. As a commissioner, how would you handle a conflict between a staff recommendation for a certain course of action versus what you are hearing from your constituents? And tell me kind of how you would work through that process.
Well, I would encourage everyone to sit down together, and let's go ahead and let the left speak, the left side of the agenda of their, or their, their issue, and let the right speak their side of the issue, and let's try to come to some sort of common ground on resolving it for the betterment of the community as a whole.
Okay. Where am I at here? Mr. Gressman.
I think that I'm qualified for that. Part of it, what I said in my introduction is, when I went to work for a large company, I had to learn how to collaborate more than just as when I was a sole proprietorship. And I'm the kind of guy that likes to listen to both sides of a story, all the sides of a story. And then I can say yea or nay if I've done all my research. If I think more needs to be done, I'll say, hey, let's sleep on this tonight. And let's, let's come back and address it again after we've all thought about it again. But we have to sit down, we have to discuss things. And I think that's what will make our county a better county and our Board of County Commissioners better commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps.
All right, repeat the question again, so I can answer.
You got it. There's a lot of words to this one.
Yes, there is.
It's three lines long on my sheet. As a commissioner, how do you handle a conflict between a staff recommendation for a course of action versus what you are hearing from your constituents? And maybe talk through your thought process on that.
Okay. All right. It's all, it's all about perception. And it's not necessarily how I perceive this, it's how others may perceive this. So again, people get a bad rap. And one of the things how to clear that up is transparency. You know, somebody is well, well-qualified for a position, you've, you've got to educate the constituents about this person. You know, they can make bad remarks and have bad thoughts about this person because of somebody else down the road told them a bad story, it may not be true. So again, I believe education is very important and transparency along with that about the staff member just being for recognition. You know, I believe the data needs to be laid on the table, shown to everyone, and explained to them why we believe this person is right for the job. Education and transparency is very key to what's going on right now, because I believe behind closed doors, people, the residents of Nassau County are not seeing behind closed doors. We're being, we're being held back, sock in the mouth, however you want to say this, we're, we're told to hush. Well, I just believe transparency is very important for that to happen. I believe, I believe the taxpayers of the county really need to help vet this person in there, but be able to do so, I believe you need to show them this person true and clear and let that decision be made.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Okay, another topic that, that is in the forefront of everybody's mind, and we'll be starting this question with Mr. Gressman, is, is obviously COVID. starting this question with Mr. Gressman, is, is obviously COVID. And, and obvious, the, the economic impacts of, of the COVID pandemic have brought many businesses to the breaking point. And what would you do as a county commissioner to ensure the survivability of as many small businesses as possible?
Sean, you're right. The COVID has, has put a, has put our county in places they've never been before, put campaigners in places they've never been before. But one of the things that I would have probably liked to have looked at in helping businesses through the COVID is having a website set up, someplace that the small businesses could go to and learn about the, the CARES Act and, and learn how the, some of these monies that were available to them through the government. We could have some, we may have had to put somebody on to, to help with this, or somebody out of our staff, current staff, that could have done nothing but during these times help small businesses, help that don't have the resources to do these kind of things, or the time is they're trying to run their businesses and, and stay open during these events, that we could have somebody to help them. And that's what I've, I would have liked to have seen.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps?
All right, repeat the question again. I was listening to Charlie. I'm sorry.
You got it. No, absolutely. Basically, under the, the current COVID pandemic has brought many businesses to the breaking point. What would you do to ensure the continued survivability of as many small businesses as possible?
Well, I believe, I believe education is important. I believe we need to educate everyone in how to run a business properly and safely through this. I know personally myself, when, back in March before the CDC set these guidelines, I stepped up and, and, and totally transitioned my business to get it ready for what we have going on right now. I, I totally moved my business to contactless, which is very hard in my business, but we have done well with it. Matter of fact, before this meeting this morning, I had to do a couple more advances to it, which totally sealed it. I think, I think these, everyone needs to be educated on this. This is, this is not just a bump in the road, this is serious. They set the guidelines, you know, it's kind of like what's going on with the mask in Nassau County. I consider, I say this here a lot, this is kind of like lowering the speed limit now. This is temporarily under construction. I think that the folks need to understand it's gonna affect the economy if, if we don't run by the guidelines. I believe they need to be educated on the importance of this here, keep them being shut down, keep them being fine. And it's gonna keep everyone healthy and safe. I think that's important. We just gotta work together. I believe education is the key. It, it might be something we can put, be a web and flyers to send to these businesses. It's, it's, like I say, they need to be informed and keep, keep their customers informed. And the customers being informed is, I believe it's gonna carry, carry the load.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Mr. Farmer?
Yeah, well, Sean, I tell you, you know, we need to be working with our state, local, and federal leaders. We also need to be working with the Chamber of Commerce and other organizations in our community to find out who those businesses are that are having issues due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I know that there's a lot of people on their knees, and there's a lot of people that are way up on their feet. So another thing I think that we could do that would be very helpful for local business would be like we always do here in our community, and that's come up with some sort of a GoFundMe or some sort of a, a bank, you know, where we can put money in, in there on a local level to help these families bridge the gap until we can get back on our feet again.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Okay, and, and we're gonna start this question with Mr. Stamps. Everybody take a breath, we're in the home stretch now. This would not be a Chamber of Commerce forum without asking this particular question, and, and that is, what is your opinion of the role of the Chamber of Commerce in interacting with the Board of County Commissioners?
Me personally, I did, I did come to your candidate boot camp. I think the Chamber of Commerce is outside of working with the Board of County Commissioners. I think what y'all do is, what y'all have been doing, y'all proved to me back in January, February, y'all do great things. I believe, I believe y'all helping inform the county, just like you're doing now in this, in this forum we're doing at, at this particular time. I believe it brings transparency out. Somebody has to do it. I mean, what's going on, what we're doing today has been lacking, and I think y'all doing such a great, great job doing this. I'm very, I'm very much promoted. I have no problem standing behind y'all. I, I believe it's hard work, and I believe, and I believe y'all doing a great job. I believe it needs to be here, I believe it needs to grow. It's gonna help this county grow healthy. The, the more you inform the residents, the more transparency you bring, it brings the faith back to the commissioner's office, and I believe with y'all's helping guidance, things are gonna be great.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. Mr. Farmer?
Well, Sean, you know, the Chamber, obviously, is a membership-based organization, you know, made up of businesses and groups from the community. And, you know, we all join forces with you guys, and through your programs and your benefits to all of us, you know, we, we can address the needs and interests of the community, our friends, family, and, you know, goals, you know. We promote business possibilities, financial strengths, and strategic planning and guidance amongst the members, you know. So, I mean, I believe through education and relationships and connections that we can utilize the Chamber to be our eyes, ears, and our mouth for the community.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Gressman?
Well, I'll, just like the other guys, think that the Chamber is a very important part of, of our county in relating, you know, to the Board and the name, the Chamber of Commerce. Commerce is the, the fuel, the, the heartbeat of our, of our county, of our, of our, the business in our county. So we want to make sure that we hear you as county commissioners. We want to, because you're the voice of the people, so to speak, a voice of the commerce of the county. So we want to be state, our county commissioner needs to stay in tune, listen to y'all's ideas and thoughts, and be in constant communication in, with you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gressman. Okay, this is our last question, so, so you guys can kind of think of this as your, your wrap-up question, and because of that, I'll, I'll give you guys two minutes to answer it. We'll be starting with Mr. Farmer, and it's simply this. Why are you the best candidate for this position?
Well, Sean, through years of, of business and being in people's backyards across the whole county and, and the surrounding counties, it has given me the knowledge and the firsthand experience of the issues that our community is faced with. We all know that, obviously, residential growth is a big, hot topic here for us when you're around and you get to speak with the, the neighbors on the front and the rear porch like I do, in a setting to where they see that, you know, I'm a blue-collar guy. You know, I think that it gives me the upper hand and the edge on knowing the heartbeat of what our community really wants. And, you know, I really think that through my years of experience, through my education, and through the associations and the networking that I have developed through years of successful small business, it makes me the best fit for this seat moving forward so our community has the voice that they really deserve because we don't work for government, government works for us.
Thank you, Mr. Farmer. Mr. Gressman?
I think that all of us on this panel today are, have been small businessmen, or, or have been small business guys, so we all know how to run a business. I think that is a plus for all of us. I think that for myself, working for the large corporation that I did, gave me a lot of more communication with others and having to work out deals with other people, and I think it went a long way into helping train me to be a good commissioner. I've lived in Callahan, I've lived at the same physical address for 60 years now, and so I'm stable. I know this county, I know how people think, especially in District Five where I'll be representing or if I'm elected, but also the whole county. I accepted a position on the Planning and Zoning Board this past year, and the reason I did that was because I didn't want to sit on the outside just looking in and throwing rocks and saying how things are terrible. I wanted to be a part of a solution, and that's what I want to do as a county commissioner. The only reason I'm running is I want to be a part of a solution to help move our county forward in a positive way with honesty and integrity.
Thank you, Mr. Gressman. Mr. Stamps?
Well, I'll take this back to my original speech. I know how to use a calculator. It's that plain and simple. I mean, it, this is a position of economics, it's not a position of politics, it's not a position of, of leaning towards a developer to, to put rooftops up. 2009, I like, I lost everything I owned. It takes a lot of grit to come back from that. But also, I have empathy for people trying to hold on to what they have. You know, I'm self-made. I've, I've come from nothing. Knocked back to my knees and I come back. Very resilient. This county right now is in a position where we're at our knees. This COVID-19 is, is knocking this brother back. You know, you go into a restaurant, I'm sorry, but you look around, it says 50% capacity, but they're only 25%. I promise you, people are scared. They need to have faith in somebody's gonna put them back on their feet. I've been there for myself, I've done it for my family, and I will continue to do that. You know, you know, you can have sympathy and you can have empathy. There's two different words with two different definitions. You know, you can sympathize for somebody going through tragic times, but unless you've been there and wore a T-shirt, you don't know. So I want to help this county grow, I want to take my past experiences, life experience is good or bad is what builds you, but also it creates grit. So again, on August 18th, I need your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Stamps. I'd like to thank all three of you, Mr. Clint Farmer, Mr. Charlie Gressman, and Mr. Anthony Stamps for joining us today. I know anyone that's, that's gonna run for office has a compassion and a caring for the community and people, and you'd much rather be meeting people in person right now, and unfortunately, we can't do that, so we're gonna do the next best thing. And of course, I'd like to thank everybody for taking the time out of their day to watch and learn and get more educated about our candidates. You can get more information going to the Chamber's website, NassauCountyFLChamber.com, NassauCountyFLChamber.com, where we have all of our candidate forums that we've recorded, Superintendent of Schools, Supervisor of Elections, and of course, our Board of County Commission. We will be recording next week our school board, and then later this summer, we'll have our, our municipal election forums. And we also have our candidate questionnaires up on the website. I'd like to encourage everybody to get out and vote either early by mail or on August 18th. And, and again, thank you for watching and continue to stay safe and healthy. Thanks, guys.